...performance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Traditionally notice provided as follows. Notice filed with Superior Court on July 4, 2013. Notice filed with Burlington County Council on July 3, 2013. Would you join me in a moment of silence? Please rise quickly, please.
My pleasure, ladies and gentlemen. The United States is here in America. And to be one of the greatest families. One nation under God, indivisible, but the Lord is its essence. For all.
Mr. Hamerall.
Here.
Mr. Powell. Mr. Few.
Present.
Mr. Solin.
Present.
Mr. Simeone.
Here.
Mr. Weinstein.
Here.
Mr. Jacob.
Here.
And Mrs. Goldberg.
Here.
Here. Mr. Lee, would you like to do these presentations first so people don't have to say if they want to stay for the presentation, which may take half hour? What do you think, Bob?
Yes.
Well, we're going to have a real debate about a number of issues.
Yes.
A half hour, that can take some time. So let's do that. That's what I just said. Thank you. Okay, thank you. The Missler. It's a great honor again to have in our presence tonight a couple of our students. We'd love to honor. So at this time, I ask Mr. Powell, thanks to UES.
Do I need the microphone? I have a couple of students too I would like to honor from UES, as we like to call them our undeniably excellent students. Our May meeting, as many of you know, is simply our large pageant of success. And we had a few students who were honored after that May date, so we wanted to make sure that we included them in a pageant of success. I know that Dana is here this evening. Dana, would you like to come up and join me for a minute? She's going to be shy. Dana received very special honor.
I think I have to announce.
You have an announcement.
We usually give out a pen, a special pen, but apparently they got packed away through the stomach.
I'm sure you got it.
Dana, I'll make sure you get one. Don't get worried.
Don't get worried.
Dana did a piece of artwork for the Burlington County Superior Court, Burlington County Bar Association's Ball Day Contest. And her artwork received first prize. Honored at the Burlington County Ball Day event over at the courthouse in Mount Holly, and her entire class wants to support her, right? Yes. And she's also been invited back for Constitution Day, so we appreciate the commitment. So very excited for the opportunity. You didn't know that yet, did you? So congratulations. We have two very special awards. Annabel Chin, I didn't see her here this evening. She was the first place winner of the Dear George Washington Letter Writing Contest, which is held by the Gilder Lohman Affiliate Schools. And she won a first place prize with her letter from students all over the country in grades kindergarten through the third grade. So that's a tremendous honor. And we also have another student, Annabel Chin, whose artwork was entered in the artwork display at the New Jersey Association of School Business Officials. And her artwork was one of five winners from throughout the state for outstanding student artwork. And she received a hundred dollar gift card. And I don't think Annabel's here with us this evening. Thank you for supporting our undeniably excellent students, and I thank you for your family.
Mr. Seidel, Jessica here tonight.
I'm sorry.
Jessica Van, you're not here tonight. While we're honoring, I would ask, we honored our retired teachers last month. And Chuck Gill was unable to be here. But Chuck is here tonight, and I would like to ask him to stand that Chuck has worked for... Chuck has worked over thirty years in education.
He taught at Roberts. That's right.
Taught at WAMPS. And he's retiring as a fifth grade teacher from UES and the UES Administration and the Moorestown Administration and Board. Which is saying your dedication and enthusiasm will be incredibly missed. So we congratulate you, and I wish I was able to work with you.
Absolutely.
More. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a few open comments about the presentation this evening. The Board has been working on looking at the possibility of a bond referendum for the primary, two primary purposes. One is to get the state to pay for forty percent of it. And two is to revitalize certain aspects of our infrastructure, such as roofs and HVAC systems, et cetera. And recently, the state sent us a notice as to what they would fund forty percent of. And we began and I was to put together a bond referendum, which could tentatively come to a vote in, most likely could be September 30th or the first week in December. I think it's the second day. So tonight, we have invited Bob Garrison of Garrison Architects to make a presentation on the scope of the transaction and the financial impact. We'll also cover it tonight, Ron Iannoli and...
Sherry Tracy.
The Bond Lady is here.
The Money Lady.
Yeah, the Money Lady is here. So Bob, I'll turn it over to you. And I expect from the Board that we'll have a real debate about some of the issues. What's in this plan, what's not in this plan, why is it in, why isn't it in? And some direction from the Board about how we proceed. So we'll do that when we get to the end of the presentation from Mr. Garrison. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. And I don't know if I need the microphones either this evening. Thank you, Mr. Missler. I don't know if the Board members have eyes in the back of their head, so do you want to sit first row or is this format fun? Okay. Also joining me tonight, Manteri Tracy from Phoenix, advisor, Ron Iannoli from McNamara, Scotland, and Jeff Airy, the technology coordinator for the district, is also going to have a little piece tonight. We'll start out with the agenda, as you can see here on the screen. And as Mr. Missler pointed out, the Department of Education has given the district and many districts in New Jersey an opportunity to take advantage of grant funding. This is cash grants for projects that are eligible under the state guidelines. So I'll talk a little bit about that, then we'll move to the specific projects. What are we doing at Baker Robert South Valley, the upper elementary school? WAMPS building that we're sitting in here tonight. Moorestown High School. Sherry's going to talk a little bit about the financial analysis, actually cut before that, a little bit on technology infrastructure. And then Ron's going to wrap up tonight with the bond referendum. And as Mr. Missler said, the first project date is September 30th, 2014. Department of Education application for grant funding. Historic legislation was passed by the Corzine Administration in July of 2008. This historic Bond Educational Facility Construction Financing Act provided $3.9 billion worth of funding for New Jersey schools. The largest part of that $3.9 billion was for Abbott District. Those are known as our special needs districts, our thirty-one special needs districts. Today, they're known as the School Development, SDA districts. They're districts like Camden, they're districts like Pleasantville, Billfield to our south, and up north, Newark. And the remaining $1 billion out of that facility, fifty million was assigned to vocational schools. That left $950 million for regular operating districts. That's why it's called the RIDE Grant Program. Moorestown Township Public Schools, and the taxpayers here are part of those regular operating districts. So when the act was passed in 2008, there was limitations on the application process. So in '09, we had $200 million that was available for grant analysis. In '10, it was another $200 million. And then the program was shut down by Chris Christie when he came into office. The important thing to understand is that this district recognized that there would be another round of funding. This round number four that you see here. And was ready to apply for that final round of funding. That round of funding that totaled $500 million, the balance of the nine fifty I spoke about before. So with the district looking at its facilities since 2011, having Garrison Architects on board with their architect and engineering staff walking through the buildings, and having intimate knowledge of this district, having done previous projects, also reaching out to specialized security consultants, other district professionals, as well as the facility staff at Mr. McCarthy, looking at the buildings. So we were ready and poised when the governor announced on May 28th, 2013, that round four would be available for us to apply. Because you see, round four being announced on May 28th left an application period from June 3rd to September 4th. Oh, that's in the middle of last summer. Ninety days in the middle of last summer. Much to my surprise, 2,100 applications were committed statewide by 567 school districts. Fifteen hundred and thirty-eight applications were approved, and 331 districts received $507 million in grants. I am pleased to report tonight that Moorestown Township Schools is in the top one, two, or three, depending on what list you look at, having received $13.7 million of grant money for facility upgrades at all of their buildings. I made mention on the slide in the application here because our applications had followed the criteria set forth in the legislation. And those were essential building systems, or HVAC or electrical. They were our building skins, our roof windows and doors. They were building code issues like fire alarms, ADA upgrades. They were also security initiatives, special education, and special population. The reason, and I know some of you sitting back there is difficult to see, the reason that we highlighted some of the aspects of the state application is with the oversubscription of the program, fifteen hundred and thirty-eight approved applications. State government didn't have enough to fund everything that was on their application list. So you'll see in tonight's presentation, while our district did the right thing in applying for a grant for that aspect, whether it was an interior door, or whether it was a flooring issue, et cetera, state government can fund that. And so Mr. Missler talked about some things being added back into the program and a possible debate by the Board of Education. Those are the types of things that we're going to see when we move forward. Onto the specifics. So we've submitted projects for Baker Elementary School. And the elementary schools are very, very typical. And let's start with the blue topics. We started on the outside of our building, we go site work, exterior renovations, interior HVAC, and then electrical security and technology. So within each of these categories, we have specific projects. We list the quantity that's here, the unit price for that system replacement, the unit cost, the total estimate. And most importantly, for you viewing, what is the age of the systems that we're talking about replacing and taking advantage of the forty percent? And what's really the rationale, the criteria that we use to have these projects put forth to state government? So we'll start with site work. Patch and replace the media center circle, the front access, the play areas, and the walk at Baker School. Those systems are twenty-two years old, they're beyond their useful life. On the exterior of the building, we have kitchen windows of each of our elementary schools, exterior doors, and then we have roofing. And the comment about roofing is this district has done a great job within their budget constraints of replacing the most critical roofs that were out of warranty. So anything here, you can see in the PowerPoint presentation tonight, that roof is out of warranty. So it's beyond its useful life, and you can see over here the age of that system. On the interior renovations, intruder locks, interior doors, a new vestibule and security vestibule. And let me take a minute to stop there. Our elementary schools were designed many years ago. Our elementary schools do have small vestibules as you enter in for climate control. Today's designs, and what we're seeing in school designs, is that we need to contain the visitors coming to our building, the deliveries, et cetera, because of this security initiative. So what we have in mind for each of the schools is really taking that vestibule and expanding it, if you will, beyond the main office. So in this building, if you walked in through the airlock, you could gain access into the school without going to the main office. What we're talking about in this program at each of these schools is creating a new security vestibule. Moving those doors past the main office so that everybody has to go in and check in and be secure. So that's one of the initiatives that was identified in our security audit. We also have cafeteria tables over here at Baker School. And then on the HVAC side, a large portion of our project, the most important thing is our exhaust fan. Making sure that we're getting the air changes at all of our buildings. So on each of our HVAC slides, you'll see initially that we're taking care of those exhaust fans. And as you see over here, they're twenty years old, they're a combination of useful life, and they're also energy efficiency. So it's quality of life for our students and staff, as well as energy efficiency, the high efficiency bonus. In addition to that, we've got boiler tanks, we've got HVAC in the gym and the offices, so controls, and the nurse's suite. And you can see the age of the systems there. On the electrical security and technology side, in all of our buildings, we're replacing the VA's VA system, public address, most important, and it's also a security initiative. Replacing our burglar systems, obviously for security and our contents in our buildings. And then the lighting, we have lighting on the exterior, under the canopies. We have security cameras. Security cameras are a big part of the program. New security cameras, interior, exterior, security cameras with a new server, security cameras with new software, state-of-the-art technology. Jeff will talk a little bit about the technology infrastructure, while I conclude the descriptions of all buildings. Replacing lighting in our classrooms and media center, this is energy efficiency issues. These pictures are twenty years old, as you see on the slide. Replacing light poles and exterior lights and LED. So the total submitted projects for Baker School was $3.4 million. State government, I talked about state government and the program being oversubscribed. So what are some of the things that they cut? Well, on each of the slides tonight, you see they cut site work, they cut intruder locks, they cut our interior doors, and they cut our cafeteria tables. In our buildings, they cut our replacement lighting for our classrooms and our other spaces. The Board of Education, and most importantly, the property committee, which is the first bet with, looked at the list of cuts and decided that some things were critical district priorities and needs, and to be, needed to be considered for restoration to our bond referendum question and program. So the first thing in green, these are the restored items, are the site work that was cut by state government. The interior security vestibule for the safety of our students and staff. The cafeteria tables, which is unique to Baker School. And so the revised project at Baker is $3.3 million, a little less than what was submitted. Robert School, and again, a lot of this is typical, so I'll try to move through here tonight, we've got almost thirty slides. But basically, it's the same thing, it's the site work on the outside, it's the kitchen windows, it's the doors, it's the intruder locks, it's the interior doors. It's reconstruction of bathrooms, it's unique to Robert School. In Baker, we have renovated bathrooms. On the HVAC side, we've got exhaust fans for the first items. We're going to install air conditioning again in the kitchen, replacing the gym unit, controls down here, and then main office with the unit ventilators. On the technology, security, electric side, same thing, VA system, burglar, canopy lights, exterior cameras, infrastructure, lighting, and then exterior light pole. So the total submitted for Robert's was $3.1 million. State government, consistent, site work, doors, canopy lights, and here, we've got the interior lighting that they cut from the program, highlighted in red. The Board of Education and the critical district priorities went back in in a proposal for debate, site work and the security vestibule, with a new total here at Robert School, three million dollars, it's over three million dollars. South Valley School, same thing, we've got the site work, we've got the doors, we've got our interior renovations, including our bathrooms, the next section. We've got our exhaust fans, we've got gym units, cafeteria units, et cetera. On the electrical security and technology, VA, burglar, lighting, interior cameras, technology infrastructure, and then lighting, classroom, and media center. The total for South Valley, $2.4 million was submitted to state government. State government cut, again, to be consistent, the site work, the interior doors, the vestibule, and the lighting, as you see in the bottom two items. And we now have a full... Restored in green, we have site work, we have our security vestibule. And so the restored proposed number for that school is $2.7 million. Upper Elementary School, our newest building, actually approaching fourteen years in age, has a little bit different list. Yes, we have exterior doors on the outside, we've got intruder locks, we've got door controls, we've got media center doors. We also have some flooring. This is carpet with a VCT in the, many of the classrooms and various wings. On the HVAC side, water heaters, we've got the chiller. And one of the things that we're going to do is we're going to take the central office, the administrative office in the core of the building, off the chilled water system. That provides efficiencies in energy and energy use by not running the chiller in the summer months when our classrooms are not occupied. So we've got, those are trained controllers also, and standby HVAC, CM three units there. On the electrical security and technology side, replace the lighting with LED to the canopies, new interior, exterior security cameras, same thing as before, technology infrastructure. And here, we've got a fire suppression issue, a plumbing issue. We're going to put a fire suppression system for our server and for our IT infrastructure. So the total here is $6.5 million at the upper elementary school. State government cut our locks on their inside. They also cut our flooring, this is our carpet, replacing with VCT, as well as cutting the lighting down here, our first item on our electrical security and technology. Restoration items are in green. This is our main entry security vestibule, to be consistent, what I talked about earlier tonight. The carpeting and replacement with VCT, again, a district need and a priority. So the revised total here is $6.4 million. Middle school project. Middle school project, a building that is over forty-two years old, you can see here the age of some of our systems. Let's start on the outside. So we've got the bike path, the long jump, we've got the bus loop, we've got the side lots, that's all in the site work number. We've got doors, and we've got the entire roof here at the WAMPS school, except for the media center, which was the last bond referendum, the infill of the media center. We did the roof that obviously has warranty, so the rest of the building is being considered for replacement. On the interior side, we've got door access controls, new security vestibule, which I spoke about. Reconstruct the bathrooms, so we've got four sets of gang toilets, facility toilets. We also are considering refurbishing the faculty bathroom. Media center carpet, we've got renovation of science rooms and their associated prep areas. These are the same science rooms that I took classes in many years ago. So certainly, they have passed their useful life. HVAC, exhaust fans, again, is our first number of items there, our boilers, electric power heater. We also have some van equipment on the roof that we will remove, again, for energy use and energy efficiency. And on this electric security and technology side, we have the same items, the lighting, interior, exterior cameras, the technology, and the lighting in the lobby. When you came in, $8.9 million worth of WAMPS projects submitted to state government. State government then cut, consistent with the other applications, the items in red, they are the site work, they are the access controls, and they are security vestibule. They also cut some of our interior renovations that you see here out of the program. In the bottom, we've got the lighting that was taken out, and also the final lighting piece in the lobby. Items considered for restoration and high district priorities are in green again. This is the site work, which was put back into the program. The security vestibule, again, put back into the program. Renovation of the science rooms, pace work, furniture, complete renovation of these rooms. We're talking about going into these rooms, demolishing them to the bare walls, floor walls, dealing with the pipe chases and the utilities that run underneath the flooring system, replacing it with all brand-new pace work, all brand-new finishes, and taking care of humanists in a few of the labs. Had to work with the administration to find that program. On the interior and exterior security cameras, that was also added back in middle school. Revised total was $8.2. High School, our largest building in the district, and our longest list of submitted projects. On the outside was the parking lot, the loop in the media center circle. On the exterior of the building, we've got areas of flooring, concrete, and brick, so we're going to take care of that with veneer. We also have paddling in the woodshop area on the second floor. We have replacement of some equipment in there, the roof in those various sections, over a hundred thousand square feet of roofing. Satellite dish, and on the interior, we go in for our locks, new security vestibule, the bathrooms, we've got four sets of bathrooms. This is for finish with ADA compliance. In the A-mall, we've got bathrooms, the elevator. Yes, we have an operational elevator in the new section, but our old elevator is out of service. So we're talking about restoring that, as well as making the cab any improvements ADA compliant. Eisenberg gym, complete renovations there, electrical wrenches and bleachers. On the HVAC side, we've got rooftop equipment and exhaust fans, the first three, four items. Locker rooms, improve the air quality in the locker rooms with ventilation. Our Smith gas file hot water heater gets replaced, our absorption chillers, our plane unit decks in our original section of our building. There's ninety of those that are over fifteen years old, are the ninety-four bond referendum. The structural theater units, auditory rooftop units. Add air conditioning to Eisenberg auxiliary gym and replace the existing heaters. Replace the existing hot and chilled water units and return it in the administrative offices. This is at the separation of the main office again from the chiller system to become more efficient during the summer months. We also have a section of the cafeteria that gets replaced and the controls. On our electrical security and technology side, new interior and exterior security cameras, again, the same item, technology infrastructure. And then we also have the upgrade of lighting, and finally, the completion of an addressable fire alarm system. Please understand that the fire alarm system does work in the original section of the building. It is inspected annually, obviously, it is safe for our students and staff. What we're talking about here is the state-of-the-art system, tying it into the newer additions, the Mac Center and the addition up front, so that it's all compatible with the same type of devices. So the submitted projects to state government were $15.4 million for our largest building in the district, that being the high school. State government, being consistent, cut the site work, they cut our locks and our vestibule on the inside. They also cut some of our other items here in the Eisenberg gym, that being the bleachers, as well as the electric wrenches for backstop. Finally, lighting was taken out by state government, shown here in red. Items that are considered for restoration to the program, put back in as a priority. Items that are considered for restoration to the program, put back in as a priority, are the site work, we also added a few items after the green, the big, the property committee's and those being these next three items. The stadium track surfacing, the baseball and softball backstop as well as new electric for the junior varsity softball field because that donated scoreboard now is serviced by simple electric cords. Also, we have new vein lobbying vestibules we put back in and on the Eisenberg, the backstops and the electrical wrenches. So the revised total after the green items at the high school is fifteen point five million dollars. So I guess I'll go through the total and then I'll ask Jeff to talk a little bit about the technology infrastructure items in the next slide. But if we go and we total up our submitted projects to state government and our critical district priorities and needs, which are those items in green, which was the third slide of each of the schools, we have a total project cost of thirty-nine point three million dollars. State government has pledged, as I said in my opening remarks, thirteen point seven million dollars, so that's cash. So the local share, which would have to be raised through a special election, the bond referendum in this case, technically for September thirtieth, would be for twenty-five point five million dollars. So thirty-five percent of the total project cost has been paid for by state government. So Jeff, you want to go to the next slide? Actually, one more slide, I did this as a summary. It's very difficult to follow along tonight and say, well, Bob, you moved through a lot of these slides quickly. Where are, where are children in these, in simple terms, where is our money going? So we've got the great high chart up here, so let's start with the largest item, seventeen point two million dollars of our program, the item that you see here in red or pink is our exterior renovations. That's our roofs, windows and doors. That's preserving our asset, which is giving you the asset, preserving the envelope of our building. The next biggest item is our HVAC, that's the item here in red, that is our HVAC systems and the associated components that keep our students, staff and our community comfortable in our buildings. The next biggest item is our five point three million dollar expenditure for interior renovations. There are things like the bathrooms that we talked about, the science labs that we talked about, things that affect the quality of life of our students. Finally, electrical security and technology, not to be left off the list, is a large portion as well, four point six million dollars of our thirty-nine million dollar project. And finally, the last two components are one point nine million for our site work, they're shown in yellow, and then our plumbing, which was our fire suppression and a few other plumbing items coming in at nine hundred and sixty-one. So it really shows you the priorities which match state government's priorities because I opened up tonight talking about central building systems and building schemes for the top, preserving that envelope for the top two priorities that state government set forth in their application process. So we'll go finally get Jeff gets to say something. All right.
Just kind of give you an overview of what the technology infrastructure covers, infrastructure being, in this case, a lot of the cabling, a lot of the behind the scenes stuff that you might not normally see as a user of technology. It's not computers, it's not, it's not even servers, it's, this is basic stuff that needs to, is needed to connect things together to make the network work. Cable drops, CAT six is just a type of network cabling. The type that we have right now is CAT five and we're running up against the limitations of that type of wiring. We really need to upgrade it in order to keep moving forward in terms of the speed and reliability that we need out of our equipment. The fiber optics, the inter building utility pole fiber optic replacement, those are the fiber optic cables that connect each of the buildings together, run down the streets. We're also running up against the limitations of the type of fiber that's installed right now. Closet to closet fiber replacement within the buildings, we have certain electrical closets around the buildings that have our equipment in them, the switches, where all the wiring comes back to and each of those closets connect together with a fiber optic cable, that fiber optic cable needs to be upgraded. And then wireless access points, a lot of what we're doing these days, going to one-to-one computers, wireless networking is where it's at and we need more access points throughout the buildings in order to provide coverage for the density level of users that we want. If we have all these students in one classroom using wireless at the same time, it tends to overwhelm unless you have a good quantity of wireless access points on the ceilings supporting them. So this is kind of overview of what we've got. Another question I thought might come up is why do we need all these cable drops of wireless is what we're doing. The cable drops cover things like the telephones within all the classrooms, covers the wireless access points themselves on the ceilings, the lab machines, sit-down lab machines that are always going to be wired and needed. So it's quite a few cable drops there.
Thanks, Jeff. Now we'll ask Sherri from up and talk about the financial aspect of the program.
So thirty-nine million dollars of projects, almost fourteen million of it is going to be provided from state funding, what is it going to cost a taxpayer? As Bob mentioned in the beginning, the district has really been planning for this, looking at all the necessary renovations, improvements that were needed to all the buildings over the last several years, knowing that there was this funding while none had been released in the last four or five years, knowing that it was out there and planning for when it would be available. The district has two bond issues that are currently outstanding that are going to be fully amortized in the next two years, which means the tax rate that residents are paying right now for debt service is going to drop by about one hundred and eighty-three dollars with those two series of bonds coming off starting next year, at the end of fifteen, after fifteen, so into the fifteen, sixteen year. The timing works out perfect from this referendum from the standpoint that all these projects together could be, could be done together with the state funding and the net impact would be just over thirteen dollars, about thirteen dollars and seventy-three cents on an average home assessed at the township's average of just over four hundred and forty-five thousand. The tax impact on, on all these projects that Bob just went over is about one hundred and ninety-seven dollars a year, but again with that, with that decrease of one eighty-three that will start into the fifteen, sixteen year, the net impact would be about, about thirteen dollars, that would be the increase on the taxes for all the projects. Just another note about some of the assumptions used, we, we assumed a twenty-year bond issue for the projections at an interest rate of three point nine five. That's a little high for today, if you were to sell bonds today, if we had an improved referendum, we could go to market today, you'd probably actually be a little closer to three. Rates have been extremely low for the last five, six years, especially, we saw another dip really from the beginning of January through June, but you know, everyone's kind of waiting, when are they going up? You know, a lot of economists have been talking for the last year and a half about when those rates are going to start going up, a lot of people thought it would be this year. Now people are talking about the fall and maybe into next year. So that's why we've used a little bit of a conservative projection here at the three point nine five. And the next, the next chart really doesn't add a whole lot of information except just that I'm a, I'm a visual learner, I like charts, so I wanted to include this for you to show you as well. The outstanding debt service right now is in blue, that's currently the outstanding debt service for the district. The green is the new proposed bond, so all the projects, if we were to go out for the twenty-five point five million, which is the local share, Moorestown bond that over twenty years, you see how it fits right into that declining debt service that I mentioned over the next two years and that's why the, the net tax impact is only going to be about thirteen dollars. And now I'll turn it over to Iran Einoli who's going to go through just some of the scheduled events for the referendum.
No, but I will be great, I know the board is anxious to get into the scope. Basically, I think tonight we have a resolution that they consider, would the Board of Education consider the September thirtieth date? That, if that resolution's adopted, authorizes your board secretary, business administrator to notify the county board of elections and the county clerk, sixty days in advance of the September thirtieth date, that we're going to set aside that date for the election. That's all really it does, Mr. Garrison's firm's already achieved all the approvals. If the board elects not to go with the September thirtieth date, the other dates that would be available would be the November fourth general election date, you can do it in conjunction would be a November fourth date and then the date after that would be the second Tuesday in December, then begin into January, March of the next year. So I don't have a lot to, to, to add to this except that if we, if the board elects to go with the September thirtieth date, it needs to come to closure with respect to the scope of the projects so that we can then frame the bond question or the ballot question for you to approve, no later really than your August meeting, you need to get it to the county board of elections. About eighteen calendar days before the September thirtieth date, but clearly you would like to get that done before Labor Day because I know the superintendent would like to roll out his information program right after the school opens up after Labor Day. So come around for questions, thank you.
Just could I make one other comment? To think back on Ron, Ron talked about the dates there on the lower part of the slide. Because the life of the grant, the offering green doesn't last forever, so thirteen point seven million dollars has an eighteen-month shelf life. So state government says, we'll offer this money to you, but you've got to raise your share within eighteen months. So we've got a whole election either September, November, December, January, March because it's eighteen months from February twenty-third. February twenty-third is when they said you're Moorestown have the money, so the clock starts running, okay? So we've got those five dates for which to hold the referendum, within the eighteen months time, right?
Okay, I'm going to open the floor to questions from the board. Interesting perspective sitting here looking up at it, I saw something I hadn't noticed before. Why would we replace a thirteen-year-old roof at the UES now?
Great, great question. The roof is actually fourteen years old because of time and the roof warranty has another six years. State government, so the roof has another six years of life, so after six years, we have no more warranty and we're looking for a multi-million dollar solution. Right now, if we replace the roof, state government's going to pick up forty percent of the cost of that particular project. So even though it has some life left in it, why not replace it now with forty percent of state government money and then cast it out another twenty, twenty-five years of life and not leave it to be a problem in four or five years? So that was the thought process behind it.
My second point is, when you get a chance tomorrow to look back at the presentation, because I think a number of people will see this in the near future, the, you ought to take a look at some of the useful items because I think we sort of overdid it, you know? The bleachers in the Eisenberg Gym aren't forty-three years old, nor is the air conditioning because there isn't any, you know, that kind of thing, just so, there are issues that people get hung up on.
Sure, and that's, and that's what's, what's great about it. I mean, you've seen this presentation now six times with the rest, every time we look at it, we've got so many items on here and I guess that's the danger of presenting three, four hundred items, is that one or two of them is going to be disputed, but in the fullest of disclosure, the residents have a clear picture of what the system is, what the quantity is, what's the unit price, what's the cost for everything that we're doing, just because state government is demanding it.
So the board is seeing tonight what is essentially the recommendation of the operations and facilities committee when you look at the stuff that was taken out and the stuff that was suggested to be back in, purely from a standpoint of what, what do we need from, you know, facilities, you know, not putting on the head of the budget finance committee or the curriculum committee, you know, there's some feedback in the technology committee that we got for this, but really looking at our facilities and saying, how can we continue to keep our facilities at what we believe is a, an acceptable level and do so at a cost to the tax, taxpayer that is as reasonable as possible? It's not a problem we can ignore and yes, there's a timetable because the state will only fund so much up until a certain time and they may never fund projects like this ever again. So with that having been said, we ended up with a project that was slightly more than what we intended when we started, but there's some things in here that are certainly open for debate. There are any number of projects around the district that many of us would like to see get done, but that wasn't, that wasn't our charge. Our charge was to try to stay within that decline in the bond schedule so that there was no impact for the taxpayer. Well, we, we now know we missed and we need to make some adjustments if that is the board's goal, but tonight I wanted to find out, we need to find out, exactly what is the board's goal? Do you want to have a referendum like this with, as a first question and then ask the public if they support some additional projects which would be funded over twenty years or whatever, without state support? Do you want to have just one question that includes additional items? So the floor is open to that discussion. Curiosity, we're going to cut this back to the net zero, if that was the intent, how much would have to be cut out of this dollars wise?
Three million.
Exactly what you asked, Rick. It doesn't matter how much money is, just it was more the question of if that's the intent, how much we're talking about so we know what we're asking.
Just, just to that point, Ron, remember, the UAS roof, state government's paying forty percent of that, so the three million dollars we could look at in some of the green items that we add, you know, the track, the vestibules and some of that stuff, because it's remarkable when you look what state government gave us back in Ron, it almost was zero because the greens pushed us to twenty-five, the roses to twenty-two.
No, I, I, yeah, I think we have a good idea where to look, I'm just using that as a, yeah.
So just on that three million, is that based on the three point nine five percent?
It is, yes, so, so again, it's a
Scale back to, so let's say three percent, you know, you know, some of our problems and, we were at three percent more with that question.
At, at three percent, you probably could do maybe another million, you wouldn't be able to get the full three million, but maybe another million at three. But again, you know, to look at three percent for twenty years is just knowing that we still have the time horizon between, you know, September thirtieth referendum at the earliest and then being able to actually get the bonds to market, the first time we're really talking about going to the public with the sale would really be December. So we'd be at rates to stay exactly where they are to be able to achieve that.
So you're saying in December we would lock in at a rate?
Yeah.
That'd be the earliest?
That would be the earliest, yes, with a September thirtieth referendum. The December referendum, you're, you're looking at about sixty to ninety days from when the ref, from the end of the referendum.
Questions or points of view?
Just a question, for some reason the referendum doesn't pass and so we use that rate. Would have another by the appalable for this, if you do it earlier rather than later, is that correct or not?
Well, yeah, you can, you, the law allows you to go back as many times as you want.
But as far as the actual ability to see it forty percent quick?
Yeah, we can, we can, we can do it again in November or September or December or so, up until the, the grant runs out in eighteen months.
March is our last thing.
So we keep going back over and over again with this point of banging your head against it?
Well, I mean typically when boards of education go back, they, they cut something because they don't want to go back to the same planet, so, but let's, let's do it once and let's get it approved, that's the best way to do it. One other point is, this Tracy in her financial analysis, she didn't increase the variable base for twenty years. Now we know property values have come down recently, but I don't expect the house assessed at four hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, forty years, twenty years, that'd be the same number. So like, the likelihood is that your base, your assessed value, evaluation will grow over the course of twenty years, therefore it will take less dollars to pay the debt. That's another conservative estimate that she's made along with the interest rate, so we want to consider that as well, although Although short-term, like process in mind.
So as far as the changes that were suggested by Operations and Facility for the science labs and the middle school? If I remember where I was looking at here, it was 42-years-old the science lab or something along that?
Ranging, ranging all the way.
So who has indicated to us what are the standards and what things are needed with the core curriculum and with the safety precautions that are now the norms?
Yeah. In fact, it's interesting that you picked that project. It went back into the files and in 2005, Bobo had asked us to prepare renovation plans for the science lab. And we actually put out the bid, I believe, the two science lab in A-Wing because the gas piping was in such a disrepair.
I remember that.
So the project didn't go ahead. I don't know why, but we had advertisement for bids, et cetera. So I pulled those plans out and shared with, with Gene tonight. But we would scrub those plans and make sure that they fit, you know, what we did in 2005, 2007 with the layouts today. But the concept is to have wet labs on the perimeter. So you'd have sit three on each side, full lab stations, and then you would have desk chair combinations so that you could have lecture areas in the middle of the classroom. This gives flexibility to the classroom and it doesn't lock us in with islands that protrude into the space or any kidney shapes that are only for science. Today's classrooms want to be flexible. So this provides a curriculum, the practical lab on the outside, and a desk chair combo where you could run an English exam in the middle of the classroom. So it's tool purpose.
We haven't asked for the curricular side of this yet, but we suspect that these were built for a curriculum that was developed more than 43 years ago and that the, the real application in the classroom has changed so that the design would change.
In our process, it's enough to do any configuration, any layout. The limitation will be, of course, the four walls that we have to work in and the prep room. That's our limitation.
And just to follow up to that, this may be more appropriate for the curriculum committee to examine. I know it's come up already. I don't, I don't necessarily know what's needed in middle school, but I think thought needs to go into whether or not we need six or eight fully functioning labs. If it's possible to have maybe two or four fully functioning labs and then have to be shared. I mean, if they're being used on a regular basis by multiple classes at night, obviously that would not be feasible. However, if they're used on a more occasional basis, I think that may be feasible.
Or maybe sometimes you need one design and sometimes you need a slightly different one.
I mean, I think everything needs to be okay. Money means six hundred thousand dollars.
Can I jump in a little bit? Each classroom does need its own set of opportunity for instruction. They are not able to, the way that the curriculum is set up, either they're all computing, they're all conducting the experiments on the same day or they're rotating through. There'd be nowhere for them to opt, it'd be a nightmare to schedule a non-lab room, a lab room, based on the curriculum that we have to offer because they'll do several days of labs in a row based on what they're doing in their classrooms. So each team, each, each classroom that has a science room would need to have the same equipment.
But, and I feel comfortable too, the committee can examine that.
Don, you were mentioning before the concept, you talked about it a little bit, pulling some of these items, I'll probably say some of these green items because you're not getting 40% share and possibly doing that as a second question, is that one of the reasons that you're thinking about? Or was that?
Well, I was thinking about the possibility of a second question for a number of reasons. Perhaps to cover some of those and other things or perhaps to just cover other things.
So, because most of these things that didn't get, I think as Mr. Garrison pointed out, were either site work that they just don't want to pay for from the state level because it's somebody requests. Or were security related for, for the vast majority of which, for whatever reason they chose to take out. You know, I know that security has been an initiative that we've talked about numerous times as a Board. I don't know if I really want to pull that out of the referendum. I think, I would think that's important, doing those types of things. Site work's a little different. I don't feel about site work, but again, it's an initiative I talked about.
No, I agree with you 100%. There's some things that even if it wasn't funded by the state, you wouldn't pull out. The other things that are there, that are in the plan that don't get funded by the state are the kind of things that we know there is no other way to get, to be able to afford them. You know, a couple hundred thousand dollar paving job in our budget just doesn't fit. So that's, that's why they're, that's why they're, yeah.
That makes sense from the use of light aspect. Fifty to 20 years doesn't make sense to me at all.
Right, right.
Can I also make a comment? So we looked at, David, what's, well, taken, the site work was added back in old school. Way out in economy scale, you go by that particular aspect. The security vestibles, you're going to buy somebody that's going to have board hardware. So those like projects, equalize across the board so that one neighborhood school or whatever doesn't feel slighted over another. That's why those groups were kind of put back in as a theme calling for.
The overarching principle in the discussion that the Operations and Facilities Committee had was, okay, if you have to put some things in here that aren't going to get funded, but make sure that you're not risking the opportunity to get the funding by suggesting things that the community might not think are, are as important as we.
Well, I guess the question is, I mean, I'm looking at what's in here. I think the community is knowing what's in here. Most of it is what I would call maintenance, but it's, you know, it's stuff that we don't do in the near term is going to become probably more expensive because of what failures and maintenance costs to fix them. And we've already had a referendum that with a parking lot, so I think I would probably recommend we keep that in. And I don't really see any particular item in here of, that I'd say that really shouldn't be done. We can talk about things people might be slightly uncomfortable about, but I don't think any one item, someone's going to look at and say, because they're building that, I'm not going to support the referendum. I think people either will or won't support it on its merits as opposed to
Yeah, if they're doing this, that's not that big of a thing.
And it's not grassing from the front of the swing. So there's going to be that which you want to go with. Been there, done.
Yeah, well, that's why you're Mr. Allen?
Yeah. Oh, I was just talking about the security vestibles and I was wondering why the high school price was so much more
Sure.
Weedy than the other. Because I understand the space is different, but it's exponentially
Wait, the biggest challenge there is we've got a whole auditorium entrance that opens out onto the vestibule and the main office is on the other side of the wall. So it's going to take a lot of reconstruction of that whole area and not just putting another set of doors in for 50 or 75,000 dollars. And that's why we put a chunk of money to it. Also, when we talk about vestibules, you think about, well, okay, we're just going to put a door up. Well, the door has an exit sign, the door has padding hardware, the door has HVAC that go into it. So there's a lot of different things when we move our, our walls around that affect our building systems as well. So all that needs to be looked at. Well, my major concern in the high school is how to do it because we need certain egress entrance to the auditorium. And that's going to involve moving the walls as you turn right that part, really changing that whole entrance to right.
Right.
So just a comment about timing.
True.
We talked about economy scale, we talked about September 30th, we talked about 300 from 31 districts that got bypassed. Georgetown Township Public Schools is not the only district that's considering a monreform. There are many, many districts that are going to roll programs out on September 30th. So that's going to have increased number of projects in the marketplace. Increased number of projects in the marketplace with the decrease in contractor population because of the recession, depression, et cetera, we've got less people doing the work. Prices are going to go up. The other thing is, all of us here voted in one way or another for a go-grant, education, higher education bond, $750 million. That is really a total project cost of 1.5 billion dollars. State government is just issuing the grants for that to Gloucester County College, Burlington County College, Salem Community College, Brookdale Community College, and Rutgers or whatever. They're hiring architects and engineers, they're drawing projects. So that whole potential 1.5 billion dollars is getting ready to come on the marketplace this fall as well. My point is, with the K-1 money, the higher-end money, New Jersey's going to experience the last distorted boom in construction with the reduced contractor population. You want to be out there first, having successfully raised your local share, to have your plans and specifications done so that you can start the process. The September 30th date also gives us an opportunity to get work done in 2015 and 2016. Real quick on the schedule, when the monreform passes on September 30th, we begin working in our office October, November, December. We move out the public bids in January. We secure that contractor in February. We order material so that we're working the boiler room April 15th and break shots of boilers down. We get good work done because we have materials and labor on site in that first summer and we complete the project second shift from September 15th all the way we pick up again regular shifts in the summer of 16. So it's a two summer project at all the schools, we can get started earlier with the September 30th date.
Mr. P, do you have any other questions?
Sure.
Comments?
Please. Just on the technology, I, I obviously bring a lot of money to it. I just wanted to ensure that putting this investment in technology that's going to get us where we need to be in the district. And obviously I'm not as well versed as Jeff is on technology, but as far as this CAT 6, is there anything better out there? Is there anything newer that's anticipated to come out? My concern, I just don't want to put this much money in infrastructure and five years from now we're outdated.
Sure, there's CAT 6 and there's CAT 6A and there's CAT 7 standard that's not, it's not standardized yet. But yes, technology, it's always changing, so it is, it is hard to keep up. The other option is fiber optics to every single device in the district. It's really, it's possibility, but really not feasible. So I think CAT 6A is probably our best, better name for
And given our technology plan, you think this will get us to where we need to be?
Yes.
And we go over it for more.
Yes.
Excellent.
And there's no guarantee.
No, no guarantees. You'll put us in good position.
Good, good position. Mr. Allen, are you?
The only question I had was, I know that we had a security audit and the presentations made at us and I didn't know if Bob had the opportunity to
Oh, please. Because we haven't talked about that in the public session. This plan addresses the most critical issues that were pointed out in that report. I mean, we could go further for sure, but from a cost-effective standpoint, the most critical issues this plan addresses. And I can explain to you what that is. Mr. Simms?
The one question I had, if we agree for the moment that these projects need to be completed in this cycle, if we chose not to do it and then bore the cost of all these projects at the 100% level as a district, what would be the impact on the taxpayer? $13, if the state pays 35%, if the Georgetown taxpayer paid 100%, what would be the impact on the average household?
I think I can answer that question.
Please. You wouldn't be able to do it.
Right.
Not with a 2% cap. Publicity needs to know that whatever your budget is, you can only increase the tax levy by 2% each year. It's almost impossible for school districts to take care of their infrastructure improvements around the state because most of that 2% move are salary increases, health benefit increases, other fixed costs. So school districts, the only, the only alternative for handling the infrastructure improvements we're talking about today is by authorizing the bonds and the debt service payments come out of your debt service fund, not the general fund. They don't bounce up against your cap. So it's just unrealistic to think you can do $35 million worth of projects in several years' worth of budgets.
Thank you.
If, if we went to referendum
Right.
Sheriff, if we went to referendum without 14, May, it's 120 on top of 13.
Right.
So 133 would be the impact of the taxpayer instead of 13 and 12. Because state government
Let's be fair, the taxpayer, it's 133 plus the opportunity they gave up to their tax reduction. So a hell of a lot of money.
Yes, that's correct. 133 plus the 187 we're paying.
They also preserve the value of the asset that supports the tax base, property tax base, and more is done every year, so.
And just to close the question slash comment, this will never happen again. This is the last time we'll ever see money coming to state for these types of projects.
Right. And to that point, I talked about, you know, the 2008 legislation. The first legislation was in 2000, that was 8.6 billion dollars. That got exhausted in five years. Then we have deployed from 2005 to 2008 when we had Corzine come in, and then Christie stalled it in the last three years, thus the 2100 application. So in New Jersey, debt servicing kind of get reimbursed as you borrow the money over life has been the traditional ways to build buildings like this. Grants have only been authorized through legislation in 2000 and legislation in 2008. That's it.
Thank you.
Dave, anything? No, I'm good, thank you.
Alan's question.
Okay, go ahead now. I just want to come back.
I didn't see you there. Quick question. Do we have an opportunity to fine tune this after tonight if we so desire?
That's what we're going to
Okay. And secondarily, I'm of the opinion it should be, we should go for one referendum, one question. It seems like a lot of the green items are security items and site work and I don't know if I want to risk having them on a second question when they're deemed very important.
Yeah, I'm kind of thinking that if there were two questions, the first question has to be so clean, clear, this is the best interest of every taxpayer, every student, every teacher, et cetera, that, you know, no one could possibly vote against, of course we will, that would have a groundswell of support that's significant. Whether the second question, which might include some other things, has that same support is what we're really trying to find, find out. It's really more about what will the community support having gone through this economic cycle? What will we now support for our schools than it is about the individual projects almost? We really need to answer both those questions.
Don, are you talking about items maybe not listed within this document for a second question?
Yes. Or maybe it'll be a third. We can have more than two questions, all right? Maybe it'll be a third question. So anything else out?
No, thank you.
So much of my questions have been asked, been answered. There were some community issues or concerns regarding fencing at the elementary schools that come up on the page, but I don't see that included in this. So I was wondering where that falls in, in our concern level, security level.
I have to be honest with
First question, second question.
Yeah, if it hasn't done on my radar spring, I've heard issue, I've heard the issue as if this protects our children. I've heard the issue where it may protect our children, but it makes our schools look like kind of tenteries. And that, I mean, there was a couple, there was an exchange about that sort of thing, I guess, when we first started talking about security. And I frankly haven't heard much more about it since. I don't know what the state of the art or clinky is of the education community about this sort of thing, but what do you, tell us what you think.
Well, mandated by state government is pre-K and K playground areas have to be fixed. So those are state government guidelines. As far as the other fencing at the elementary schools, that's really odd. Some of my districts do it, some of my districts don't do it. If we were building the new UES school, the best practices because of 9/11 would force us to have a perimeter fence around the entire building. It would force us to have bollards at the end of our driveway. Those would be dramatically different in the construction. But the answer to your question about fencing in playgrounds in particular, lower grades, yes, fencing is around playgrounds for security, and the upper grades, not so much.
So, so then if that's the case, then there would be some fencing that we want to see.
We could add that.
Sure.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's a nominal amount of money. It's probably more important than design. Did you say that, did you pre-K check?
Yes.
So, we're not
We're new.
We're brand new.
Grandfather.
I'm trying to make sure that I went to this and said we're out of
No, word compliance, if you were drawing from my newspaper.
But then again, if it's mandated for new construction, why isn't it important for our whole construction? So we'll have to look into that issue.
Right. So there, so though, I guess if I were thinking about, we're going through this endeavor, we're going out to the community. If there are other things that are not on this list that are important, is this the time to add them? Is it the time to add the first question or do you put them in a second question unless the community decides the level of importance?
Or are there some things on the list that inspire state funding, aren't that important to us for whatever reason? Or maybe important to somebody else?
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, I went into Yeah, I mean, I, I, I mean, I looked at the, I don't want to go item by item like that, but I looked at that, and I don't see any issues. I looked at the roof, and it doesn't, you know, on one, on one side, it doesn't make sense to me that we would replace a roof that still has longevity, because I want to run the numbers. It's actually, it's advantageous to do it now because it's possible more five years later.
There are some things on the list that, I, I said we weren't going to talk about security, there's some things on the list that didn't get such high recommendations in our audit that we have in here, so we'll, we'll figure that out.
So I guess, uh...
So the answer is yes, there may be some things in there that really aren't that critical from another, from the point of view of this question.
So, um, then there are other items that may not be a security issue or a facility issue, such as lockers. And we have new lockers in the new wing of the high school. Yet we still have our students jamming into, I'm not sure what that is.
Whatever you're talking about.
How you would, just close that line. But things like that, that if we're going through this effort and we only want to do it once, are there, and I, I just started that out as an example, but are there other things that may, may not have made this list that should be considered?
There are lots of...
My question is, where do you draw the line?
Well, we'll try to help you draw that line.
Yeah.
And then, you know, one of the other causes, the more we throw in, then you start adding things in that people say, why are you doing it? I mean, there's things in here right now, people can say, why are you doing it? So, the more, why are we doing it, things we ask, because there's no necessity for it, it's more than nice to have, um, the more, we'll put people's minds that there's too much fat in what you're doing, and it would cause a concern. My, yeah, my point to add was, in the first question, any reasonable person looking at this who came, come to the same conclusion we came to, this is a way to finance it, this is beyond its useful life, needs to be replaced, you know, we can't do without it, kind of thing. So, that's, I think that should be our goal for the first question. After that, I'm not so sure. Well, in addition of, there may be some things that we can't get any other way that we absolutely have to. Yeah, that's true. Okay. Um, I'm going to open the floor to public comment on this issue. We'll come back to public comment on some other stuff when we get into the agenda, but if you want to say something to the board about this particular program, now would be a good time. Yes, ma'am?
I'd like to add, I'm sorry.
Please, just say.
Just for, I, I, I'm amazed that, um, we, we fight the state uh, in a polite way all the time for funding, and how Moorestown only gets five percent of the money we spend within our school district from the state. So, it would, I'm amazed that Moorestown fares so well with this bond referendum and got such a high amount of money, and, um, and I'm delighted by it, so.
Mr. Garrison is to be thanked for that. Keep your wonderful job.
Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am?
Uh, I just want to get some clarification on a couple items. I'm Rude Cox, I'm a first grade teacher, but I also live in town. Um, one twenty-three South Park, that. Uh, Chris, the elementary fencing, just to shed some light, I'm happy you brought that up. Robert specifically has had some issues over the years. Uh, we back up to other homes, also people can cut through like Wawa and come up, so we've had more than once where there's like a stranger danger on the premise. Um, at one point, our vehicle leaves in because they're lingering, coming in and out, we found broken glass bottles. I can elaborate on what we've actually, our, we've found, or our students have found, because there is no type of perimeter. So, I think that's a really good point. I was just curious, uh, Robert's parking keeps coming up and up. In case you're not aware, we don't have enough spots for the staff that we have, let alone then if our parents actually want to come into the schools. Um, in return, we have to park on the streets, so we're parking in front of resident homes. We have two staff members that fell this year during a snowstorm, uh, one of which has to get surgery on her knee. So, this is from the faculty advisory committee over and over again, but I don't see it at all on that bond referendum. It is, but it's under something that is not easily... It's under the state work. Uh, perfect, thanks. Good news. Okay, um...
Oh, wait, listen, but let's be clear, I'm not sure that...
It's not new parking?
It's not an expansion?
It's, it's repaid.
Well, they have a plan, the architects came out before. They're going to have to cut down some trees over here and give us eight more spots.
Uh-oh. I don't want to say tree.
Listen.
With me?
All I'm saying...
Well, we'll take a little...
From a state security standpoint, if you want all the background history, I'll more than look at it.
Yeah, I know, I know.
But, and it's also, I mean, we've even had home and school people that try to come for meetings and can't find a spot. I mean, it's not, it's not a good practice. Um, South Valley drainage system, I'm really happy to see that. South Valley's been having a heck of a time with mold, et cetera. I'm assuming it's two hundred and fifty K while with the fact that they're built on a swamp.
Don't say that, I was transiting to say that.
There, there is stormwater that will be taken care of through the infrastructure.
Okay, um, can we, your little pie chart, which was very helpful, can you tell me what percentage of that is going to security costs? Like, security improvements versus like interior, exterior?
Well, we'll get to the answer. It's not readily, readily available.
Thank you, Tom. Um, the intruder locks, that's now cut? As working in the town, I would strongly recommend that we possibly put that on somewhere, the intruder locks, just for the pure safety of our kids. So, if you're looking for input from your community members and some of the works in there, I would strongly consider that. Uh, the UES roof that's only fourteen years old, is that where a lot of our leaks have been happening, which in return has caused mold? Is it the entire roof?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, the roof has some isolated leaks, but I want to make it clear, it does have some life left in it.
Sure.
So when a leak, uh, leak happens with the warranty, that manufacturer comes out.
Now, does the manufacturer come out and repair that for free? But did they also reimburse us all the remediation costs? So the furniture we have to replace, carpet has to be repaired?
Yes, no, maybe. It's really a source of circumstance, and it's proof by the district. So, Mr. McCarthy does a good job of staying after that, so I'm sure he collects.
Dom, why is that funny?
Uh, we'll put you in charge of the claim process, because I think you ought to go after them, but I don't think that's...
Well, no, okay, so now I'll go into my next theory on this, which is, we can pay now, or we can pay a whole hell of a lot more later. We've learned that over the last couple of years, specifically mold remediation, having to replace furniture, having to bring pay staff to come into inventory the room, having to replace classroom materials, having, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, and it's still going on. So, I think we can be proactive here, which is looks, or we can be reactive. I think Chris's point of, if we're going to do this, then we should maybe consider when we say, oh, fencing's not that intensive. Well, then why don't we have it yet? We've talked about it for years, so obviously, we should put it on it. Then the key also is, I know we all have a lot of community members here tonight, but share with the community the condition, the effects and impact of our buildings. I think the more transparent we are, the more they'll understand the urgency and the need of this. This is not like nice to have. This is literally, we have teachers in classrooms with buckets because there's roofs leaking. Like, I think we need, I'm not being dramatic, I think we need to truly be as transparent as possible and say, fourteen classrooms in South Valley had to do it. They're getting their closets ripped out. They're getting their puppies ripped out this summer. This is true issues, and unless our community understands the issues, they might take it as, oh, this is nice to have. Only fourteen-year-old roof, but if you tell them the impacts our buildings have had because of this fourteen-year-old roof, they might understand the urgency. So that was my only, I know we're probably apprehensive this year, too much information, but if we give a number of, we've had thirty roof leaks over the last year. Sometimes data can drive decision-making. That's just my advice when it comes to all that.
Well, one of the things I thought of as you were suggesting that is perhaps what we have had with each school is some sort of lenient preamble that says, talks about, you know, when the school is built, renovated, what's the condition of the school, you know, that kind of thing? Why, why this?
Or we need this because we've had this, like some sort of compare, like a...
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And also, you know, as we roll out the public relations campaign, some existing conditions of, you know, take a picture of the existing world, take a picture of the door that doesn't work, show the stage on the ceiling panel. What we don't want to create is hysteria.
I'm...
Fire alarm system is not compliant to high school, oh my goodness. So hysteria versus sharing the information, that's the fine line.
No, I agree, but I think our community appreciates transparency. Thanks, Scotty.
Yes, ma'am?
I have seven twenty-five more to sound like. Um, I have a number of thoughts, um, I don't speak natively. All of you, unfortunately, because there's six thousand people listening tonight, I've talked about this before. Um, I think thirteen dollars is a very digestible amount. Um, I think not accepting the forty percent from the state would be foolish. That said, I think one of the things that jumped out at me was looking at all the efficiency pieces. Um, efficiency is great, as mentioned with tech, with technology. What's new today is new tomorrow. A twenty-year efficiency plan for a saving X number of dollars, there's something shiny new in five years. Suddenly, efficient isn't efficient anymore. I'm not against going green by any means, but I think there's a balance between realistic and efficient. Efficient for twenty years, when you're going to throw that in fourteen, or ten, or seven. You know, I don't have the influence of architecture, but I would ask you to pay special attention to that. Um, I think that thirteen dollars is digestible with regard to question one and question two. I think anyone who votes for thirteen dollars would vote for twenty-two dollars if they understood the instant aspect. Um, I think if you vote against thirteen, they're going to vote against any. So I think, as Bridget was saying, if we could have some real transparency, if we could work to get the other six thousand people engaged in some way, it's not realistic, I think they're all going to be able or have the time to come here. I think if we have a really solid campaign, I, I resist a little the sort of PR term, I do a lot of PR myself. Um, we also have kids watching TV, marketing, PR, sales. It's very different than real solid data and information. So I think we need to find that balance between sharing real information with the community and doing a sales campaign to have them buy into what is considered to be the right way to go. So, just a few things to consider.
All right. Two questions, one, for a comment. Um, the board has to, has to approve certain things to move this process along, and at some point, we'll get to where the, the publicity campaign, or wherever you want to refer to it as, has to get put together. Start, we'd be happy to call on you to give us some unbiased view of what we are putting together, or help us put together.
Okay, I'd be delighted.
From a facility standpoint, have there ever been any issues discussed in your speech meetings about our facilities and how they relate to, um, what we need to, you know, execute?
Not really. Um, you know, the, the facility conversations I had when they're over coffee or in speak meetings, they're more general, gosh, you know, curbs and sidewalks and doors and security, obviously, big deal for everyone. Um, I can't imagine those parents in the district wouldn't have that on the top of their list. Um, but some of the nice to haves, I think some of the parents would go for too. Again, the parents voting for the thirteen thousand, the community voting for the, for thirteen dollars. I think those who are pro-that would say, you know, for five bucks more, what else can we get? So I think if they know a really good understanding of fences, which I think is, is a fabulous idea. My kids are beyond fence age, unfortunately. I wish you could still fence them in. Uh, but, but there's a lot of near profoundies in the district in fences, or I know when I was at preschool, fences were my number one issue, um, concern. So I think there are, if it was clear, you know, here's what we really need to, and here's why. I think hearing we have a roof and it's six years left in it, there's going to be an automatic basis of that, so. But I think it makes sense, but it needs to be a really clear communication. But if we had the, you know, for five bucks more, you know, like they do advertising, you'd be order now. I think there is some, some power to that, if it's done well without the publicity or silly. I think there is some power to it, and I think as a district, we could perhaps see some real improvements, um, with clear communication, transparency, et cetera.
Thank you, sir.
Sure, thank you.
Yes, ma'am?
I'm Ruth Larkin, fourteen South Shirley Avenue. And, um, I'm going to say a couple things, while they always grow. That's not what I came to speak about, but hearing the discussion. Um, so, coming from the taxpayer's point of view, first of all, um, I'm in full agreement that this somewhat needs to be sold, and I don't mean sold in a cynical PR way. I think sold so that people see the other both sides. I'd be delighted to help, um, do that, and I've written so many press releases for organizations in this town, I'd be, um, I think I would be in a sense. Um, so, number one, when you talk about the roof, I would put safety on that, whatever the roof is in that high school. Um, I don't know when it was designed, but it kind of comes like this, and it happens right above the exit from the auditorium into the cafeteria hallway. And if it rains during a theatrical performance, the students are going from darkness into bright light, and there's water on the floor. And that has the L word written all over, it happened during Aida, and they're in costumes, and I'll tell you what, it is well and truly a lawsuit waiting to happen. So I would put safety under it next to anything related to the roofs. Um, and not asking to add this to the referendum, but it reminded me of something. Um, all those theaters we use, it should have blue lights in the back, and they're cheap, you know, I mean, a string of blue twinkle lights even. But when there's a show on, there's kids in there, you can't see it. It's dark versus light, and what's, you know, what they usually have in theaters is some sort of blue lighting. And again, clip-on lights, you know, it's not, it's not being fancy or expensive, but from a safety and responsibility perspective, um, that they should really be, be installed. And again, we're going to do it on the cheap.
Well, when it comes to building currents in schools, you can't do much in the way of cheap, but it's still a good.
Well, I mean, not that it's according to code strangely, not by data, they would have put it in, um, but-
We have pretty strict.
Oh, then, well, then you, then you look at, because I'm-
But you're right, you should look at lights for people moving around backstage, et cetera, et cetera.
It's, uh, 'cause it's a shame Chuck was long, 'cause I was fine to say, I spent many hours backstage helping with those productions, he's such a loss to artistic. But, um, because of him, I've started about fifteen years ago backstage every one of these, um, theaters. And when there's a show on and those kids are back there, you really, really should have lights, I mean, because it's, it's, um, I, I'm, I'm not a homographer at all, but telling you from a liability standpoint, anything, um, would, would help if someone's back there. Um, so, with, um, you know, when I hear safety, I'm just gonna take my tax money, um, any, uh, just coming from the taxpayers' point of view, uh, that, that the thirteen dollars in the big font, that's really good, when I hear fully amortized, I go like this, and I don't know, does that mean we're done paying for it? Because, you know, I'm not, I'm, I'm embarrassingly ignorant of, of the term, uh, technical terminology, and I'm sure I have a lot of company. Um, well, they're not, so that's good. Um, and just something to do, anything related to security, the fences for the preschool kids, I suspect the average taxpayer would say a fence around the perimeter of every store is, you know, a, a, an intruder, a determined intruder is just gonna hop the fence the way, like, you know, thirteen-year-old hops our back fence. Um, but certainly for the pre, uh, pre-pay and pay areas, that's very appealing. Um, and, and, um, the, um, and again, the, the wording, I think it's really very important, there isn't anything here, except, no, for me, the base, that's a baseball scoreboard important, I would think that explains to me, I'm, I usually say yes to everything, but, um, most of this stuff, we talk age back and all, it's so boring, but people are willing to pay. Last, if, behind closed doors, when you guys go to committee, um, there's a lot of, um, opposition to any kind of increase, be it thirteen dollars, I'd say minus one dollar is better than zero increase from the tax. All I gotta hear is my taxes are going down this much, I myself would rather pay thirteen, I would pay twenty, you know, but if that is a sticking point, then I would say go the one dollar less, but what I would really say is the thirteen and fifteen and get the blue lights, because it's truly, um, it's really, really dangerous back there.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, we'll move on, let's look at another comment from the board.
What's the, uh, what's the next step?
Uh, operations facilities will kind of draw this together, hopefully, uh, I'm gonna be late, but, if with enough time to have perhaps another board meeting in late July before, and try to get this to some sort of conclusion by our August board meeting.
Coming in early August meeting.
You mean, our regular August meeting would be early August?
We can do that, or we have a special meeting just before.
We're, we're gonna, yeah, we're, we're gonna have to have a special meeting, even if only we have five people there. Towards the end of August, if we're gonna get this over with. But we, so the idea is to get it set with as many board members as can be present as soon as we possibly can. But going back to the O N F committee is, I think, the appropriate next step, and I will let the curriculum committee deal with the issues about the science rooms and exactly what the outfitting of those should be, but I think that's the only curriculum kind of issue. So, um, we're skipping everything here, we're skipping the board committee reports, because we hit on most of those items in the agenda, and I'll open the floor to comments from anyone about any other subject that might be on our agenda. Yes, sir.
Well, on the agenda?
No, I won't, no, come on, it doesn't matter when it's on the agenda. You, you've been in our shoes before, you know we wanna talk to anybody and everybody.
Oh, yes.
Yes.
My name's General Arstid, I live in three D five Farmdale, and I'm here because I'm concerned about the safety of a single student. Uh, the circumstances, I walk quite a bit, and one day as I was walking down Church Street and traffic cleared, including some semis, I saw a young boy driving across the street by himself, so I helped him across the street, I knocked on the mother's door, I came up with him and said, "I just saw your son drive across the street by himself, what's going on here?" She said, and the bus driver said that he would have to wait until the bus moved off before he could cross the street, because the bus driver, I don't know whether it was male or female, said, "I don't want you to cross in front of my bus." So, I don't know whether this is policy, I see other buses stop as I walk through town, and the kids get on, and the lights flash, and the stops are, and stuff like that, and, uh, this kind of thing doesn't happen, so.
Aren't they supposed to walk in front of the bus?
They're supposed to drop off on the side of the street that the child belongs on, take you away on a busy street, is this on Church, sir?
This is our Church Street.
Church and?
Church near Farmdale.
Church near Farmdale. So, they should be coming back around at some point and dropping that child off on the Farmdale side, as opposed to having the child cross the street.
Okay.
So, I will, do you know what grade the child was in?
No, I'm sorry, I don't, but it-
An elementary child or a?
Elementary, yes, about that high, you know.
Well, we'll definitely get him to it.
Okay, so it's something that has a solution.
Yes.
Yeah, Mrs. Sunders is the supervisor of the transportation department, so, um, either she'll contact you or Rita Martin Askel.
Okay.
Just to enter the transportation and tell you what the resolution is.
Okay, yeah, the address is five forty-four North Church.
That's the child's address?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, very, very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Take care.
Anybody else?
Ready for the, uh, Epsom and school property?
Absolutely.
Good evening, uh, my name is Tom Manning, I'm at seven four-one Signal Lake Road. Um, for those of you who are not familiar with that particular street-
Can you get closer to the microphone, please?
Yes, please.
For those of you who are not familiar with that street, it, uh, butts, rejoins, and runs into the Wham's Athletic Fields and the running track. Um, I've been talking to my neighbors, and I didn't know this, but it turns out that a street that has twelve homes has ten dogs. Everyone on my side of the street has a dog in their house, one house has two dogs. And I, uh, I think I reasonably can say that probably every single dog has visited the, uh, Wham's or the general athletic fields surrounding the schools. Um, just as a general comment, I, uh, am dissatisfied with the, the way in which the issue is, uh, being presented by the proposed policy. Um, there to scuttlebutt, um, obviously with some type of incident, uh, that I believe is prompting this policy. I have no idea what the incident was, and I think it's very difficult for, um, members of the community to address a policy like this without really knowing what the facts are that are driving, uh, the impetus of the policy. And I've looked on the Board of Education website, maybe there is some statement, uh, in there somewhere that describes what has motivated the board, or its policy committee to come up with this policy. I know it came up initially back in January, um, I wrote a letter to the board at that time, I'd written, or I sent an email, uh, this time setting forth what I saw were, uh, my objections to it. Um, and as I thought about the issue further, I realized I didn't really know what I was, uh, being called upon to respond to, because the, uh, the language which is in the policy, which is something to the effect that the, uh, the board has a, wants to make an effort to maintain school grounds in a condition appropriate for, uh, the activity, security, and safety of school pupils. I mean, certainly that's an auditory objection, and, uh, I don't think anybody would disagree with that, but, um, I think it would be appropriate for a more, um, what's the word of the day, you know, uh, transparent, uh, approach to this issue to have, uh, some document on the board's website that describes, uh, what happened, what, something happened, I've heard, uh, things about what happened, but I haven't had any specific, uh, factual description that I feel confident is exactly what happened. Um, back in January, I checked with the, uh, town clerk. Uh, I said before, I, I sent a, an email into the board, um, I'm a twenty-seven-year resident in Moorestown. We've had dogs ever since I moved in, uh, we're on a third. Um, my understanding is that there are one thousand, or there were one thousand registered dogs in Moorestown for two thousand thirteen. Uh, and that, I, I presume means that the one thousand homeowners paid their, uh, their dog license fee to get that number. I don't know what that means really, but I know on, on my street, um, as I've already said, we have of twelve homes, we have nine homes that have at least one dog in the home. Uh, one home has two dogs, and we have no park nearby. Uh, when we moved here twenty-seven years ago, we saw the Wham's Field as our park, and we've used it, uh, as our park over that time period. I think that was a, a reasonable expectation of our park. And the policy that has been proposed, uh, obviously would frustrate that expectation, and I, uh, I don't think it's appropriate. In my view, I, I think the, the, uh, the issue has to be looked at from the standpoint of the nexus. Uh, my understanding is that a dog was loose on the school fields and, uh, maybe a child was bitten, I, I don't know the details. Um, but I can tell you of my own personal experiences, I have walked with our dogs, I'm a walker, I just love to walk, dogs have always loved to walk. Uh, I used to walk, uh, from our street through, um, Wham's over to Stanwick Road, I'd cut over on Westover, go down along, uh, Dolphew, end up on Main Street, and down Chester, go past the Presbyterian Church or on Bridgeboro, and wind up home again. Um, our current dog pulled me over, uh, up on Main Street back in, I think it was oh-three, and I tore my rotator tendon in my left shoulder, and now we only walk about, uh, less than half of that distance, but I've put a lot of miles on in Moorestown, and I've seen a lot of the town, met a lot of people. Uh, it's a generally very interesting, um, activity. So, when we leave the house, he's sitting in the harness. Uh, two times while walking on Dolphew Road, uh, we were basically, primarily he was the focus of the attack. We were attacked by dogs living in homes on Dolphew Road. In one instance, um, we were walking on the left-hand side of the road, which is where I usually walk, uh, I happened to look over to my left, and here comes, uh, there was a woman nearby, a car, homeowner, I guess, here comes this dog larger than my dog, tearing at us in a very, um, vicious-looking way, and just plowed right into my dog, and I, uh, it was early in the morning, kid going to school, I was doing my best to try to keep my dog away from this dog, um, so that my dog wouldn't get bit, and also try and prevent myself from getting bit, because it was that much of a struggle. Uh, fortunately, the homeowner was not that far away, she came over and called her dog, and I had persevered on unsuccessful attempts, the dog finally responded, and went to her, and she apologized and moved on her way. Uh, another time, I, I was walking same side, left-hand side of the street, um, before we got to that point of the first incident, uh, a dog that was from a house on my right-hand side, that actually borders the Dolphew, came tearing across the lawn, across the street. The dog was sort of, uh, about the same size as, uh, our size for, and aggressively ran into my dog. I was trying to, um, protect my dog, trying to keep, uh, the other dog from being in the road, because there was still traffic coming by. This went on for several seconds, maybe thirty seconds or so, and then along came a, uh, a resident of Dolphew Road, who I, I don't know personally, but waved, and, uh, he stopped and he said, uh, "Can I give you a hand? Uh, can I go and get the owner of that dog, 'cause I know that dog?" He gets out constantly, I said, "That would be great." So, he stopped his car, went, knocked on the door of this home, uh, the neighbor there came out, apologized about the dog, went back in, and moved on our way. Um, my point in, uh, telling you these stories is to demonstrate that, uh, dogs being loose in town, um, is just a common occurrence. It's unfortunate, I mean, we have leash laws in Moorestown, but, uh, that's it, I, I walk all over, I see dogs running with their owners loose, and, uh, nobody's there to enforce it, but I would suggest to you that the incident, which apparently is behind this particular proposed policy, was servant dividends. It, it happened, when it happened, where it happened, not because the person is on the board of their property, but because things like that happen, and they happen all over the place. Um, but we lived in Woodland, Havenfield for fourteen years, we had a German shepherd, the kennel had told us, uh, uh, that the dog should go through a heat, um, because that apparently is something that we do to get the best results from the dog. I'm not really that type of dog person, my wife is really good at that sort of thing. Uh, our dog went into heat, we had, um, thirty dog, thirty male dogs camped out on our front, uh, lawn in the wintertime. Uh, our dog couldn't even go out and take a pee, it was unbelievable. It got to the point, my wife finally, uh, went out and grabbed one of the smaller dogs and took him home to where he lived, which was in town. Um, just because you have a leash law, obviously, I guess it doesn't mean that it's gonna be effective. I, I'm not sure what the solution is, but I don't think that it's fair to penalize, uh, law-abiding dog owners in town, because unfortunately it's not, in any way unsympathetic.